Tuesday, May 28, 2024. Is there a motion to open tonight's meeting? Trustee Rosenberg, second trustee Taylor, all in favor. Meeting is hereby open. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Great to see so many people here. And the first few items on our agenda concerning the Police Department. So is there a motion to appoint Joshua Poznick as Police Sergeant in the Village of Dobbs Ferry? Trustee Rosenberg, second trustee Rosen Asher, all in favor. That passes unanimously. So Joshua, you want to meet me at the frontier and we'll administer the oath. Hello. So for those of you who do not know, we had a couple of retirements. And with people retiring, that leaves opportunities for others. So we have a promotional vacancy. And based upon the chief's recommendation, he has recommended, and we already voted, so we can't take it back. So it's already done. So Joshua's been promoted to the rank of Police Sergeant. And a little background, Police Officer Poznick grew up in New York City. He attended Manhattanville College before becoming a paramedic with the town of Greenberg Police Department. He's married and has two daughters. And I gather your two daughters are here, I could see. And you know what? Why don't you guys come on up now? Come on up. It's so cute, isn't it? My gosh. I have three daughters, so I'm living, it's going back in my head here. So on August 1, 2013, Josh began his law enforcement career with the Dobbs Ferry Police Department. During his time here, he's been assigned various duties. Initially, he was assigned to the Patrol Division. And currently, he is the sole traffic officer in the department's traffic unit. Additionally, he is the Dobbs Ferry Traffic Committee's police liaison. If anyone understands Matt, he's fantastic at that job.
We will miss him if he stops doing it, so you know.
He's a dedicated member of this department. He's a field training officer who oversees the department's medical equipment and teaches new recruits at the Westchester County Police Academy. Josh also enjoys police work. And his knowledge of the law make him an ideal candidate. Therefore, as recommended by the chief and the Board of Trustees, Josh, you're going to be promoted to the rank of probationary police officer as of May 29, 2024. So congratulations. We have, we have, oh, I have an oath. That's right. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and to carry out the duties of Police Sergeant of the Village of Dobbs Ferry? Congratulations. And with that, he has a badge which we'll ask you to paint on. So good luck. Does it matter which side? Look at that, that was very easy. Let me get the other one. You talk.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Board of Trustees. We also have a, Rob, we have the book for them from the sign?
Oh, the book, that's right. I didn't get the sign, the book.
Just again, as always, Mayor, Board of Trustees, thank you so much. Very excited for Josh. He's been a fantastic police officer, and this is a good day for us. If I may say, one of the best things about Josh's participation on the Traffic Committee is the cameos we get on the Zoom meetings from his daughter.
Oh, I have to do a motion. I don't have it in front of me. But is there a motion to promote Andreas de Jesus to the office of Police Detective? Trustee Rosen Asher, second trustee Patino, all in favor. That passes unanimously. And will he come on up? There he is. Again, it's already done, but congratulations. Let me just give you a little bit of history. Again, we had someone who retired. So this is a promotional vacancy. And the chief sent a memo to the Board of Trustees on May 16. And I will just read from it. That he is recommending that you be promoted to the rank of detective. You grew up in Assening. You're married, and you recently had a daughter Gabriella. Is Gabriella, she's here, okay. Police officer, good things are happening to you. Police Officer de Jesus began his career with the Dobbs Ferry Police Department on July 17, 2019. He has shown dedication and loyalty to both the Police Department and the village. I believe, this is from you. The chief says he believes his knowledge of the law and his ability to professionally interact with his peers and the public at large will prove to make him an outstanding addition to our detective division. And he recommends that we promote you to detective, which we did. So following up on that, let's administer the oath. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and to carry out the duties of Police Detective of the Village of Dobbs Ferry? Congratulations. You can bring the baby up if you want.
Never wake a sleeping baby.
Yes, go ahead, good luck.
Thank you again, Mayor, Board of Trustees. We really appreciate your continued support.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You can come back up. Is there anything you want to say?
Just want to thank the chief, the village, and everybody that made this possible. Dobbs has been my second home, and I can't wait to start this next chapter of my career.
Don't go anywhere. Joshua, you want to come up?
And thank you to my wife. And Gabriella.
Sure, come on up. Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, the Board of Trustees. Thank you, the chief. I appreciate this opportunity. I look forward to this new role in this wonderful community. And thank, special thank you to my wife. She bears a lot of this credit and the strength she has, she gives to my daughters. And I see that every day. So I'm just excited to get out there and thank all my fellow officers for always having my back and our back. And you guys make it what it is. So let's get to it.
Let's do a picture so all the families can come on up. All the family can come up. Friends and family, whoever's here for them can come on up for the picture if you like. Who's taking the picture? They'll take the picture? Why don't we slide over so we can get in front of the trustees?
Oh, my goodness. Look how tiny that baby is.
That's a tiny baby.
It's like real newborn. Oh, my gosh.
Wow, when you said just had a baby, that's a real just.
That's adorable.
Yeah, they're so little.
If you want my advice, now's the time for you guys to leave. You could stay if you want.
Thanks, chief.
Seventeen days.
That's how old the baby is?
Yeah.
Oh, my God. There are a couple of rows of seats available if people in the hallway want to come fill in.
Isn't there another square? Come on, you guys can sit up front. You can sit if you like. Okay. We have a few more appointments to do. So is there a motion to appoint Tyler Daniel as a volunteer firefighter for the Dobbs Ferry Police Department? Trustee Rosenberg, second trustee Sullivan, all in favor. That passes unanimously. We want to thank Tyler for volunteering to join the volunteer fire department. We certainly need all the volunteers we can get. And we appreciate giving us his time. And we encourage anybody else who's interested in joining the fire department to do so. I'd also like to announce the appointment of Luke Mullins as a regular member of the Ad-Hoc Committee. Is Luke here? Luke, there he is. So congratulations, Luke. You're a part of the Ad-Hoc Ferryfester Committee. And I'd also like to announce the appointment of Hiba Haber as a regular member of the Ad-Hoc Human Rights and Diversity Committee. I've spoken to her, and I think she'd make a great addition to the committee. So we want to thank her for volunteering her time and energy for that committee as well. So thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing considering the site plan application for the property known at 99 Main Street? Trustee Rosen Asher, second trustee Sullivan, all in favor. Public hearing is now open. Who is here to speak on that application?
Sorry, who seconded that, Mayor?
I'm sorry, Mayor, who, first second?
We're keeping minutes, so.
Trustee Sullivan.
Second, thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
I'll go slower. While they're loading up their laptop, do you want to give us some background, Laurel Lee, or is that not appropriate?
Sure. What you have in front of you is the resubmitted application for site plan. You saw this and referred it, as you were required to do, to the county planning board and also to the Dobbs Ferry Planning Board. You have a response from both entities to enter into the record. If you wanted to consider any of the recommendations from the county, you can do so moving forward. The planning board sent it back and just indicated that they recommended the waivers being requested for the decrease in the minimum size of the studio and the decrease in the minimum size of the fourth story, which you had indicated you were amenable to further considering. The fourth story at this location is entirely in the purview of the village board. Only the village board can authorize a fourth story. And the conditions by which you do that would be to consider, the criteria to consider it has to do with whether it increases diversity in available housing and also it adds to the affordability component in the downtown. So those are the areas that you'll be considering based upon their request. I did not draft a resolution because the waivers are really essential to the decision-making. And I really need your guidance and rationale for providing the waivers. There's also a request for pileup. So I can get that resolution back to you for consideration at your next meeting. I thought it was premature based upon the request for the waivers.
And just to be clear, they want, you can just clarify this, and I'll ask you. The studio, they want to make smaller than what is?
Correct. They're requesting a studio apartment of 487 square feet, where a 600-square-foot studio is the minimum size under the code. So you'd need to waive that. And also, they're asking the minimum fourth-story floor area, it's supposed to be more than 50% of the total floor area of the story, shall not exceed the total floor area of the story below that. And 80% is proposed. So it is a little bit larger than the 50%, which is written in your code. So those are two waivers they're asking for in addition to the fourth story itself, which you'll need to make findings for.
Okay. So welcome.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry I didn't get your name.
That's right.
You're speaking to the microphone.
The village clerk is out, so we have.
Yeah, so we're keeping.
And use the microphone also. I think I turned it off. So if you turn that microphone on.
And we, yeah, we understand how hard her job is at this very moment.
Is that on now?
Yes.
That's perfect, thank you. It's Pete.
Pete Gulick?
Gulick.
G U L I C K, from Michael Lewis Architects.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry. So we're presenting 99 Main for our client, the Genesis Realty Group. We have Mike Lewis here tonight with us, as well as Jack and Mark Zadrema from Genesis Realty. And we first presented to you, I believe, on 3/12/24 meeting. And you referred us to the AHRB Planning Board. Since then, we've had two meetings. We had a pre-submission meeting with AHRPB, where they gave us some suggestions that we followed. Then we came back for the public meeting at the AHRB, which was well received. Again, a few comments which we took into consideration, made some changes. And we left that meeting with unanimous approval on the fourth floor and the waivers that we've been asking for.
It's actually not an approval, it's just recommendations.
Their recommendation for your, for the board, the VOD.
Because the Board of Trustees has the ultimate jurisdiction for all the downtown districts.
On the fourth floor, and as well as the waivers. Again, they unanimously voted in favor for the waivers, fourth floor, and are asking you to actually vote on the fourth floor and also the PLOP, along with any other questions you may have. Throughout the process, we've been talking to our two neighbors to the south and north, 97 Main Street and 101 Main Street on the right, as you can see there. And we have their approval and blessing. So that's nice. We've been informing them throughout the entire process, when we're only doing two floors, as well as expanding up a little further. So to just go through the project quickly, we'll show you the drawings, the design, and then answer any questions you may have. So here is the intro screen. You can see on the left, it's the existing building of 99 Main. One-story building in the front, two stories in the back. And to the right here is the proposed, it really reads as a three-story building from the street. The fourth floor is set back 12 feet, a little more than 12 feet. It uses a different material. So when you're looking at it from the fourth floor, it really does feel like a three-story building with the fourth floor setback, you know, further from the street. It's just the site plans. We're not going, we're not expanding the footprint of the building at all. So that stays exactly the same. You know, in the rear here, we have two parking spots. So that was one of the reasons we didn't want to expand the building all the way into the rear of the lot. You know, there's 80% lot coverage here. So you really could do a building that goes almost all the way to the back. And then, as I'll show you in the side view drawing, really a much larger bulk than we decided to do. And I think that was one of the reasons why they gave us some of the waivers on the sizes, because we could have done a larger building and even a larger fourth floor. But we decided to do a smaller building. So that's why they had given us those accommodations. Here's the lower level, existing on the bottom, the proposed on the top. You enter this from the rear here, where the parking is. And then it comes up some stairs to the first floor, which is the main entry here on Main Street. Again, this is the street level existing and the street level proposed. You walk into this large office space on the right and the middle. And on the left is the residential entry that goes up to the second, third, and proposed fourth-floor unit. On the second floor, you come up the stairs here. And in the front, there's the smaller studio unit. And in the back, facing the Hudson with a large terrace, is a one-bedroom apartment. When you come back up through the stairs to the third floor, it comes up to a two-bedroom unit that's got a terrace in the rear. And then going up to the fourth floor, again, there's a one-bedroom unit with a terrace on the front, which is that 12-foot step back here. And then in the rear, another terrace going onto the river. And then this is just the roof plan with some skylights and solar panels on the top.
So the roof is not accessible by residents for use?
No, it's not. Just the terraces in the front and the rear. You know, we're pushing up, we're not at the maximum height. But you know, if we did have people go up there, it would just be, it would make it too tall. And we're trying to keep the height, you know, smaller than allowable. This is the front elevation, the existing on the right here. And then the proposed above it. Brick and stone materials, stucco on the side, very similar to the rest of Main Street. And then this is the rear elevation, existing, and then proposed on the top. Of course, the rear is a little different, much more open. So you have the views out towards the river and terraces on every level. And this all steps back towards the front, which you'll see in a side view drawing of this. So again, here's the existing side view looking north. It's a two-story building now. And then this is the proposed elevation looking towards the north, with some of the added detail on the windows and the joint lines that the AHRB was asking for in our last meeting there. This is the elevation from the north looking down towards the south, where you see 97 Main, beyond it just a little bit. We're poking up above 101 Main here, just these two stories. This is again a section cut through the building. And what this shows is, you know, one of the reasons why we stepped it back was the parking here, we didn't want to lose. And we also didn't want to cover up all of 101 Main's windows that are in the back here. So this pink line represents the buildable area that we could have built. So really, this fourth floor could have, well, it's larger than the third floor. It could have been larger than it is now, you know, if they had gone all the way in.
How could it be larger if we have to approve it? And it's supposed to be 50% of the floor below it, right? So it really couldn't have been larger. You could have designed it larger and asked us to get a waiver.
That's what I mean. What I'm saying is if we had built out the entire mass that is allowable here, you know, which is this pink area, that the fourth floor could have been even larger and still be at 50%. That's the, I think that's the main reason why.
So you're saying if you would increase the size of the third floor, then the fourth floor could have been even bigger?
Yeah, it's sort of hard to see. There's a pink outline here. That pink outline is the allowable area that we could have built. So much larger and much more bulky here.
Right. But I think trustee Sullivan's point was that that depended upon you getting a waiver. It's not as of right that you would have the fourth floor.
Yeah, I mean, the fourth floor is.
You're saying as of right, you could do that pink to the third floor.
For the third, yeah, I got that.
Yeah, the fourth floor is at the discretion, no matter what the size is. So although it is larger, it could have been larger if they decided to bulk out, you know, use the entire mass of the buildable volume. Again, this is just that same section cut looking down towards the south. This is the streetscape, which shows, again, here's the existing building. And then in context, you see it with the rest of the street. You know, this is sort of unrealistic view because you see it head-on. But what this drawing down below shows is, again, we're trying to make it read as much as we can as a three-story building. So from across the street, if you're looking up, you just even see the top of that fourth floor because of the setback. And we also lifted up the parapet wall so that, you know, your eye even goes higher up, and you don't see more of that fourth floor.
Where was that person standing that you said?
Across the street on the sidewalk.
Up there.
Here. You know, if you're on this side of the street, on Main, looking up at it, that's sort of your, you know, where you see.
From ground level.
Up into the building there.
That perspective being from an average-sized human being, right?
That person, he's 5'9". Yes. I didn't cheat the height on him, but a few extra inches on that.
Listen, I've done a lot of term papers. I know what it is, play with margins.
Could you just ask, answer, why are you making the studio smaller?
Sure. You know, the lot, when you look at this lot, it's a very narrow, small lot. If you could look at the, if we go back to the site plan. Initially, we only had one apartment on that floor, but we really wanted to add an additional unit there. But we didn't want to push back into where the parking is and make the bulk of the building bigger. You know, it would have been really easy to do that. We could have added, you know, we could have gone back. And here's the rear of the building now. You know, we could have gone back almost 15 more feet. So it would be easy to make that apartment bigger, but then we're losing the parking. And we're starting to move into 101 Main Street's side windows on those other floors. And we didn't want to do that. If you go back to the section here.
Further windows that are being blocked at 101?
There's one window. You know, there's a series of windows here on the third floor and a series of windows here. And this is one of the reasons why we stepped it back like this as well. So we're only blocking one of their windows, which is a common hallway window, not in any of the apartments.
So that gray outline there is, that's the other building?
Yeah, the gray, the gray shadow you see here is 101, you know, we're looking up.
Right.
And that's 101 Main. It goes all the way back to the right of way. It's a really, it's a deep building.
Okay. And so only one window is being blocked, and it's a hallway window, hallway window? Okay. And that pink area is what, as of right, you say you could have built too?
That's the allowable buildable area of the lot, the pink here.
So you're asking, saying that I could have built it this far, but since we're not, we're asking you to give us waivers for the height, I mean, the size of the fourth floor?
The size for the fourth floor.
And the existence of the fourth floor. How many residential units are there in the building?
Four units. Four units.
So each floor, a unit?
Yeah, there's a unit, one on one.
Except the, the top, the fourth floor is two units?
No, no, the top is one, fourth floor is one, third floor is one, and the second floor is two.
Right, the studio.
Smaller studio in front and a one-bedroom.
Well, that's the second, that's on the second floor. Oh, I'm sorry, I misread that.
What's the total height with the fourth floor and the roof?
You mean the height of the building?
Yeah.
I think that we're at forty-three feet. Forty-three, forty-three and a half, I believe.
So the village council said that one of our decision criteria has to be about affordability, if I understood that correctly. Are any of these units planned to be affordable under affordable housing definitions? And if so, at what percentage of AMI?
Uh, there's not, you know, are you talking about like the fifth, a fifth, a fifth affordable unit?
No.
I don't think that's what she said. I think what she was talking about was, I have the code up, you have, you have to set forth, so waiver has a public benefit.
Right.
One of which could be affordab, you know, be affordable, but because it's under five units, I don't think they're required to have an affordable.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Right. And, and since they're offering the diversity in the studio, that would result in a more affordable option in terms of this dwelling unit. But it is not mandatory for them to have covenants and restrictions.
Gotcha. These are going to be rentals? That's the plan?
Yes.
And, and what's the pileup request?
The pileup request, you know, we've got the two existing spots, and, you know, those are only going to be used by the officer and, you know, working hours Monday to Friday. So Valerie had talked about in the code, there's something called cooperative parking, where you can almost hot swap the spots, where someone, you know, when they're not working, the residents could use it. So we proposed to do that, and we're asking to reduce the five required spots we have for PLOP down to three.
So you're asking for two, you're asking for two spaces for pileup, plus you're also saying you'd like to be able to use the cooperative parking theoretically to share the spaces that are existing on the site.
Yeah, the new residential units that we're creating, you know, require five spaces. So we're asking that to be reduced from five down to three through cooperative parking on the rear there.
I was curious. No, I was going to ask, Lorley, why there's not a memo from Valerie in, in the packet?
No one on the AHRB PB wanted to touch that issue, so they.
Wait.
No, I, I'm sorry, I was asking why there wasn't a memo from Nelson Pulp on this project. We usually get a memo from them with everything else.
Oh, that I, I don't have an answer for. I know that they have attached all the former memos, including the memo from Anthony, and then the responses during the planning board. So I think the intent was to distill the consultants' memos and reviews into the planning board recommendations. But again, you're serving as the approval authority, including HRB, so they do mention that, that they wanted you to spend.
That's the next question, yeah.
Yeah, they wanted, you, you serve as the HRB in this zone. So of course, you know, we have the downtown, I actually copied them today, the downtown guidance, and they're specifically pointing out they'd like you to look at the facade. I think she said the.
The south facade.
The south side facade. So you want to provide, yeah.
Sure. That was Rob Lane's suggestion from the HRB. Rob, let's see, just get to that south facade. Rob said that he loved the project and thought we were doing everything right, but he did have a comment, and that was on the south elevation, here. So again, we're looking uptown with one-on-one Main in the background. And so, you know, you're going to be able to see this part of it from a distance at an angle, so he just wanted to make sure that we had treated these windows architecturally with nice sills and headers, and put some, you know, instead of having one large wall of stucco, to put some lines in, some joint lines to represent the floors. So that's what we have done here on the south side, and also on the two floors above one-on-one Main on the, on the north side as well.
Would you zoom in on that? My copy is.
Yeah, it's really hard to see.
Not, not very good on the, in the packet.
So those revisions were made since you've been to the planning board?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Like, you know, those were the latest planning board recommendations that we incorporated into these, the B and T drawings that you say.
Yeah, and so they, they made the recommendation to take a look at the south, and then you've responded by making these revisions.
Exactly.
So you're, so you're articulating, can you zoom back in just for a moment? That's what I understand.
Sure.
If the planning board is asking us to look at this thing.
Yeah.
You're just articulating the, the floor levels with the joint line horizontally, and then is there a vertical joint line?
There's vertical joint lines, there's horizontal joint lines, and honestly, I just hadn't drawn in some of this, and that Rob, you know, picked up on. So, you know, we had to make sure we're adding, you know, a nice sill and a nice head over these windows, so that doesn't read as just a, a large wall with no, you know, no in and out, and, and not so flat.
So what are you, what are you doing at the, for, can you zoom in a little on one of those windows? What's your proposal for the sill and the casing or the window type?
Just a simple, you know, I'm sorry. Just a simple stone sill at the bottom and the top, a larger version of what we're doing in the front. That's all, just to give it a little bit of articulation and punch it a bit inside. Think it had some depth, so it doesn't read flat either. You know, Rob was big on that, sort of having a punched opening rather than, you know, having it read as a very flat facade.
And the, the railings? What are your guardrails?
Yeah.
All right. Could you describe those?
Sure. We're proposing just metal rails with glass, you know, metal, metal, metal on top and supports with glass, just to keep the view open towards the, towards the river.
No awnings?
You know, each one of the stepbacks here has an overhang, almost creates its own.
Okay, yeah, just asking.
Comfort area. So no awnings on the rear there.
And do you have the elevator bulkhead shown in here? Is it, is it?
There's no, no elevator.
Popping up above there?
No, those are just some HVAC units and the skylight, and the roof access to get up onto the roof.
On the side there is stucco?
Yeah, the sides are stucco. The sides and the rear are stucco.
I don't even know if I'm asking this correctly, so the current size of the proposed fourth floor is how many square feet?
Eight hundred and twelve square feet.
And if we said it has to be fifty percent, what would it be then?
It would be, hmm, about five hundred square feet. It would be a studio apartment, basically.
Okay. So the, right now, it's a two-bed?
Uh, one bedroom.
One-bedroom, okay.
Yeah, let's see if we can get to that one, that's.
So I, I think that the first, the real, the first question to ask is, does the four-story, because before we get into whether or not we want to provide a waiver for the the coverage requirement or limitation, is this whether or not we think the four-story meets the criteria of what allows us to, you know, get rid of the four-story? I, I think that it, it does in the spirit, right? It provides a number of smaller units in the downtown, which are, which are by, by nature, more affordable than other units. They're not, they're not, you know, in capital letters, affordable units, but I think this is very much in keeping with what our overall agenda is, which is to provide greater density of housing, some smaller units, so that it's affordable and achievable for people who would otherwise be priced out. So I think, my opinion is that this, I, I, I'm in favor of allowing the four-story. The argument that, that they make and that the planning board agrees with, I think, makes sense, so they have taken kind of a nice strategy, which is to step the building back, it relieves some of the, you know, some of our, these aren't always my concern, but the concerns about an overly bulky building, having an overly large fourth story, it's sort of relieved by their stepping back. So it makes for a nice building, makes for a kind of pleasant site plan, good neighbors, as you mentioned, to leave those windows open. So I, I think the, the reason that footprint is over is, is really about the, the strategy for the lower floors. And so if we were to tell them that they had to meet this fifty percent criteria, we'd have a very small unit at the fourth floor, and I, I think it's, the building's well proportioned as it is, so I wouldn't argue that we should ask them.
Right, so what, I think when we referred to the planning board, we had agreed in theory that we wanted the fourth floor. So my only concern was how much smaller, you know, would it be making it fifty percent, which is required under the law? So you've made it, you've made it clear that it seems like it would be a pretty small, smaller unit, so I don't have any problem with it.
The last one about this, you know, we have the six hundred square foot minimum.
Right.
Requirement for an apartment. Yeah, I mean, we, we talk about this all the time, as being an item that is, you know, that's on Valerie's agenda to revisit when we look at zoning issues for minimum sizes. And I think that the studio at four hundred and whatever it is, seventy-five square feet, yeah, I mean, I, I think that's a perfectly reasonable, given the site constraints. So I, I realize we have to address this on a, you know, as our overall basis for our zoning code, but in this particular case, it seems a reasonable waiver, given the other constraints of the site. It's a small site, there are a number of setbacks, and, and, you know, it's a good way, again, to get an extra unit that is affordable into the downtown, and so I'm in favor of this waiver also.
Okay, so is there a, we have a consensus, not getting into the pileup yet, but is there a consensus on what's been presented to us as far as the fourth floor, the size of the fourth floor, and the size of the studio apartment? So Matt, how do you feel about it?
I, I agree with Michael. I think it's, I think it's a, I, I like the strategy of not sort of overwhelming the, the mass by bringing that forward. And I, you know, as the liaison to the Affordable Housing Task Force, I like things that are affordable, whether that's in capital letters or not.
Michael?
I'm just concerned that, I don't, Lorley, if our code allows us to do a waiver on the fifty percent or not.
Yep, it does.
Okay.
How do you feel about all?
With, with, with the criteria and with an explanation, I think Mike's explanation was that, given the fact that the third floor is stepped back and the limitations then make.
Yeah, I'm just concerned, because the code says that allowable floor area, the fourth story permitted shall not comprise more than fifty percent of the total floor area of the story below.
Yeah, and you have a provision in the code, I don't have it, I just copied the sections about the fourth story. You have a provision in the code that you have the planning board or the village board has the ability to waive for good reason and for rationale.
It's in the same, it's in the same section. Yeah, I mean, I just want, I just want someone to confirm, like, look at it and confirm it, because the language just reads differently to me, but overall, I, I mean, I think that it makes sense, it's a good proposal.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, this matters to some degree, but the intent of that was to limit full, so in, in, you had a lot greater lot coverage in this district than you do in others, and so if you had a building that was maximizing.
I get it.
Footprint, that fourth story would be aggressive.
Well, I get it, and I'm not like, I'm, you know, the eighty, like, the planning board's recommendation, I just.
Charlie, how do you feel?
Thank you so much. I mean, I, I think that we have a, a number of buildings in our downtown that could use some help and some refreshing, and you are certainly taking something that's not doing anything for anybody in terms of beautifying our downtown. I think your design takes into account many facets that I think are important for revitalizing our downtown, and I've sat in on many, many meetings and speakers talking about, you know, increasing density in downtown areas with foot traffic and building up. We have in Westchester County, a lot of very cute downtowns where everything's one-story and nobody can afford to live there. We have an aging population, and if we want seniors to be able to age in place and things, we have to be able to get them out of their huge homes that they're living in by themselves and give more options. And I think it's a very attractive-looking thing, and I think it will, it'll help give impetus to other buildings to step up their game. So I'm, I'm all for, you know, progress sometimes happens with, you know, little baby steps of the first person doing something that people weren't sure of, and I, I feel confident, based on your presentation and everything that we've looked at several times now, that, that this is something that will be very attractive and helpful to our downtown.
Do tell the girl with the telescope on the terrace there not to stare right into the sun.
Yes.
Larry, it was, it was pre- eclipse, uh, that.
Oh, good.
I agree with Mike, everything Mike brought up in that rationale, so I'm in favor.
Okay, so that leaves us with the discussion regarding the pileup, Lorley?
Can I, before, can I go to one? Sorry, before we, since Rob put on AHRB, I just want to bring, I want to ask one, one thing.
Sure.
The, the rooftop equipment, so one of the things that happens in a hilly, any hilly area, is that you're at the top of the hill, you get to see the top of the roof, and so equipment can sometimes be unsightly. Can you add some screening to the around, and you can decide if you want that to be, you know, planters or?
Of course.
Something like that? And I think that would help, just sort of, so people coming down Main Street aren't looking at equipment on your roof, they're looking at something attractive.
Or even, we were, we were asked about it before, so we were kind of looking at, you know, you might, you might even see that more from possibly somewhere on Elm Street.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So that's a, but yeah, we could certainly do some kind of screening on those, for sure.
And that doesn't affect your solar array?
Yeah.
No, okay.
Just like, I'll, just for the resolution when we do it, Lorley, you know, it's, it's the fourth story and it's higher than the height that's allowed, and, you know, it's like, it's like a three or four different waivers that we're doing, so.
I, yeah, I need to have the full list of the waivers. So, so the height?
The height's not an issue.
I, I thought the height was under the forty-five feet.
Yeah, it's under forty-five feet.
It's this one building over.
Maybe I read it wrong.
One building over is the same height, right?
Yeah.
Or no, like that one.
Yeah, there's not, there's no waiver issue on the height.
No, the height's under forty-five feet. It's just the fourth story itself, plus the size of the fourth story.
And then the second floor studio unit, those were the three main waivers that they, that they.
What was the first one? I'm sorry.
Uh, the fourth floor in general.
Right.
Fourth floor size.
Right.
And then the second floor studio apartment, the size of that, that's four eighty-seven and six hundred is the.
Okay, so the board is in favor of all of that?
So I just, I just wanted, yeah, I just, I just wanted to have the rationale clear, so I could, you know, when I drafted this, I didn't want to presuppose information, but clearly the limitation on the studio is, is.
Right.
It's, you're, you're okay with the reasonableness of the four hundred and eighty-seven square foot, okay? And also that adds to the rationale for the diversity of units, which is part of the criteria for the fourth floor in and of itself.
Okay.
And the reason it has to be that size is because that story has two units on it, so.
Right. So since this is a public hearing, is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak on this building? Is there anybody online? Okay. So.
I, I do have a question. I want to make sure that, because you are also going to be, make the determination on the architectural and design, I want to make sure that the changes that, that the applicant has made on the south facade meet with your, with the intentions that were described by the planning board. So I want to make sure there's enough on that south facade that make you, makes you happy, as in sitting in the role of the AHR, the AHRB, AHRB.
Yeah, I didn't know they, they could do that to us, but I think.
I didn't know that either.
I, I don't know, maybe they can't, but I think it's perfectly, I think it's perfectly reasonable to, to have the very visible south facade have, you know, sort of be in keeping with the, the principal facade for, so I, and I think that you did a nice job on the building, so I'm, I'm okay with it.
Someone on the AHRB suggested the, the wave pattern you see on, on some of the buildings on the, on the side streets, but we just kept it simple.
It's, it's just you don't have the, you, it's just a simple sentence, so I just want to make sure that we put in the resolution the changes that were made based upon the recommendation. So it's the lintels, is that, is that?
Yeah, you could say the lintel, the lintel, you could say the. Yeah, you could say the lintel, the lintel, you could say the.
Window style and window sill.
Control lines in the stucco.
Window.
As recommended by the planning board.
No, but it's not in there, just, it's throwing it to you. So I, he made changes. Yeah. So we, we don't have the benefit of Rob Lane's comments in the resolution, so I just want to make sure. So that we include it, that they did respond and the south facade is acceptable to you because the applicant did this, 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 this and this. So it's the window.
Window sills.
Style, okay.
Window sill, window sills.
Yep.
Joint patterns, rooftop screening of mechanical equipment.
Great.
Do we have to address the pileup?
Yes.
Yes, you do. If you're going to grant the pileup, you really should have some rationale to.
Okay, so can you give us what the law says first of all, and then we can see here what their argument says, and then we can make a decision?
Sure. The law requires five spaces. They're, they're seeking three only onsite. So you would, you would be granting a pileup for two spaces, which are required under the code for the residential units. And he's also suggesting that the provisions in your code that allows the shared parking between the commercial use and the residential use. So they, they're sort of offsetting some as, I imagine some will be used during the day. So they can't be designated for a particular dwelling or a particular, it's just these spaces.
Do we know what the diversity calculation ratio is for, for commercial residential parking?
I do not. I'm sure it's in Anthony's.
So just so you're clear, your argument is regarding the pileup is what?
Is that through cooperative parking, that some people will be using those, you know, only at a limited amount of time, and that those spaces could then be shared by people that are in residential units.
So that means.
And that's through the code, that's in the code.
They have some, that allows diversity of parking for a commercial res. So the, the idea is that you go to the office during the day, you leave at 5 o'clock, someone else comes home at 6:00, and they, that's how, that's what the diversity is. But we have a, it's specific to our code. It says how much you can, how much overlap you can have. So that's, I don't know what that, usually Valerie.
So one, one of the five spots, you'd be double counting one spot as cooperative. So therefore, the, in the two spaces you've got there, were, were intended to see three of the five parking spots.
Oh, no, just two. There's, there's only room for two spots in that, in the rear there.
Right. But because of the cooperative, you're only asking for a pileup for two spots.
We're asking for a reduction of those spots because of the cooperative parking, the existing ones. You know, we have five new required from the residential units. And we're asking for two less because of the two existing spots.
Oh, I'm sorry. You, you need five more than the two that exist. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, the residential is five by itself, just, you know, from what we're doing.
So you're asking for a pileup for three then?
Yes.
And how will you, as the building owner, or I'm not sure, are you the building owner? How, how do you enforce the sharing of parking spots? How do you make sure that that happens?
Yeah.
All right.
Easier enforcer, right?
But this, this is something that, you know, you know, might outlive his tendency, so.
We have to go to the mic, sorry, and just put your name in the record.
Speak very slowly because we have two amateurs taking notes. Ouch.
Thank you again for having us. And one of the things I.
What was your name?
Sorry, Jack Sidrema, Genesis Realty Group. One of the things I mentioned the first time we came in front of you was that we were excited to be part of the community. And since we started this development, we are also in contract to buy 81 Main Street. So we will have a presence here. We were going to use this as our office. We may use 81 Main Street as our office, which I think is the plan. So to your point, Mr. Rosenberg, we're going to be here enough where we think we can police and, and basically trust the people to police themselves on the parking.
Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding parking?
I just think we want to make sure that this is going to be consistent with what's in our code.
Right. So I was going to suggest, we're not going to decide today because.
Yeah, I want to write this up, so you have a resolution to review. I, I couldn't.
Can we have Valerie give us her or Anthony's opinion regarding the pot parking?
Yeah, Valerie's saying more, she's the one who had brought it up and assessed it a little more, so maybe she.
Right.
You have a zoning table on your, which, when I, when I increase it on the size of this tablet, I can't read it. So is it included, is the information included in the parking analysis section?
That's a lot.
The parking analysis, it's on that title page?
I'm just looking at the.
I don't know if you can make it bigger.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's got to be much bigger.
I think we rather, I think we should have Valerie just all pine on it and then we can decide.
Yeah, that's as big as I.
My eyes, my eyes are old.
Okay, so I can keep the public hearing open.
Yes, I would.
Have Valerie submit her opinion regarding that. You can prepare the resolution.
The draft resolution.
And then when we come back next time, we can just vote on it, subject to changing the.
Right.
Okay, that plan?
Um, yeah, and, yep, I, I would, the only other thing I would suggest is that you take a look at the comments you received from the county planning, or to be sure that there's nothing in there additional.
Yeah, I looked at that, that you, now you say that, and they had made a comment about recycling and making sure there's enough storage for whatever the requirements are. But did you guys respond to that, or? There wasn't a response in the packet, but it's from the county. They said that they wanted to make sure there was enough space in the building for their recyclings.
You know, we didn't, I don't think, you know, we had gotten, we didn't get those comments directly.
Okay, because they also mentioned bicycle parking.
Yeah, they mentioned bicycle racks and EV charging and.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that to you.
Yeah.
I know that you responded to those comments from AI, M. Nelson Pope directly.
Yeah, no, they, the village sends it and it comes to the village.
I don't think it's major stuff. It's the bicycle parking and the.
Yeah, it's all things that we certainly incorporate.
It's online with the agenda. I would say that's part of it.
Thanks.
Okay, so we're going to hold this open. In, in concept, we're fine with what you suggested, what you produced. But we have some concerns about the parking. So we're going to ask our village planner to comment on the parking and give us her opinion. And then you can review what the county suggested and see what you have to do to, to that. That doesn't seem like it's very much to do. And then we'll vote on it. We'll have a resolution and we'll vote on it at the next meeting. Okay?
And do you have a, a corporate entity that is really under contract to own this? Because I, I just want to make sure I put the right, I have like three names. I have Mr. Sidremus' name, I have Genesis Realty Group, and then I have, of course, the architect's name. So I just want to make sure that when we draft it.
I think it's listed on, in the document, in the filing documents.
Yes.
The only entity is MKET LLC.
M K.
MKET, M K E T.
Great.
LLC.
Thank you. Okay, do you need?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I need a motion to adjourn this meeting?
To a date certain, so.
To which week from today? Anybody?
June 11th.
June 11th.
Okay, so is there a motion to adjourn this public hearing to June 11th, 2024? Trustee Rosen Asher and second trustee Patino. It's P A T I N O. All in favor?
Can you repeat that?
Wait, that's P A T.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in two weeks.
Thank you. And it's 8:40. Thank you.
Thank you.
This helps me. I appreciate it. Thank you. It'll help me to, I, I created a template today and realized that there were, these waivers really needed your input, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, next is courtesy of the floor, where people are invited to, welcome to speak. We're limited to three minutes, so. I just want to say, if you're all here, it looks like you're all wearing buttons about the Knoll. So it would be helpful if you just did not repeat the same, we're willing to, happy to listen. Just don't repeat the same issues because we'll be here until midnight. So if you could just limit yourself to, either you could have one or two people speak about an issue, or you can talk about different issues, but please just don't speak about the same issue. And I just for, just to make it clear, the, as far as I know, and Loralee can correct me on this, full application has not been submitted to the planning board as of today. So nothing is on the agenda at the planning board with a full final application submitted. And the planning board will be the deciding body, the body make, the body that makes the decision in this case, not the Board of Trustees. Having said all that, whoever wants to come on up, come on up, just give us your name, speak slowly. Tell us where you are.
Yes, we just have to put the names down. Thank you.
Hi, I, this is part two from the last time I was here.
And you are?
I'm Mark Skulstad.
How do you spell that?
S K U L, S T A D as in David.
Got that?
S T A D.
Right.
Thank you.
Norwegian.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Uh. Hello? I just, I'm concerned about, you know, the last time I talked about the LGBTQ flag on Main Street and Cedar. And I know next week is, or, yeah, next week is the beginning of Pride Month. And I'm here because I don't like that in this neighborhood and in my village. I am not against LGBTQ people or anything like that. I knew a couple of them growing up, and I know that there's a lot of suffering that goes with that. But, uh, you know, my, my belief is, you know, in, in the Bible, it's pride is the cardinal sin. And I think this was specifically used, the name of pride, to divide us. I don't want this month to be, and have anything to do with division with people. I love this country and I love this town. And I feel that this is something that needs to be talked about. I, I'm willing to sit down with anybody to talk about this, but a lot of times I get the feeling nobody wants to hear what I have to say. So that's why I'm here. I'm here also because for the children, like my, my niece told me that her daughter didn't know if she was a girl or, or what, she said, mommy, am I, am I a girl?
Mark, I just don't want to cut you off, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. You don't have to get personal like that. We understand that you're against the pride, pride flag. But I just also want to make it clear that the village is all about inclusivity and making everyone feel welcome. We understand.
I get that.
We understand how you feel, and that's your right, and it's duly noted.
I, I, I get that.
Okay.
And also, I, I just want to say, you know, the, the drag queen thing in the library with the children, I, I, I think we should take a second look at that, because I don't know any five-year-old that's excited to see a drag queen.
Okay, okay, time is up. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Who's next?
Good evening. I'm Michelle St. Victor Torres, and I live at 101 Briary.
Can you just, again, just give them some time to write that down?
Just put Michelle and Torres, T O R R E S.
Thank you.
I am two of you. Okay. I am here tonight, along with many other Dobbs Ferry residents representing the Protect the Knoll group. After my opening comments, there are three more speakers who will present you with the petition. Dear Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Trustees, Administrator, and Village Attorney, please review this petition calling for an immediate moratorium on any planning and development on the Knoll to ensure that current zoning is consistent with the village's comprehensive planning goals, which included demapping the paper street in the Knoll in order to preserve and conserve this natural resource. There are already development steps happening. The developer surveyed the area on May 2nd and 3rd without the required notice to neighbors as stated in the New York State Office of General Services Standards and Procedures for Surveying and Mapping. And I quote, "Before commencing any field survey, every attempt should be made to contact all owners of property adjoining the parcel to be surveyed. Unless confidential, the nature of the survey should be explained to the adjoining. The surveyor should request permission to enter upon the lands of the adjoining for purposes of making the survey. The developer is not following basic rules and the residents of the Knoll neighborhood are very concerned. If basic surveying standards and procedures are being ignored, what other rules and regulations are being violated in the process of planning this development? Additionally, the developer's application is inaccurate and misleading as it describes the Knoll as an existing private paper street, when in fact, the village de-mapped that street almost 20 years ago for the express purpose of ensuring the area would be preserved and not developed. We need a moratorium in place now, especially when considering a development which would impact and change the entire neighborhoods of Briary Road, Shady Lane, and the Jering Nature Preserve. Once the Knoll is dug up, blasted, and paved over, we will not be able to get it back. So it's critical that the village take the necess, the time necessary to ensure that its comprehensive planning goals are being satisfied under current zoning. You have the authority to put a moratorium in place. In fact, your predecessors have done this on previous occasions. We trust that you seriously consider this petition to continue to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the village. Sincerely, Protect the Knoll Neighborhood Group."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andy Roberto. I live at 56 Luzern.
What is your name again?
Sorry, Andy Roberto, R O B E R T O, 56 Luzern Road, Dobbs Ferry. Thank you. I live right in front of the Knoll, adjoining my, my property. I'm going to read the petition as, as it stands. Please read and sign our petition in support of an immediate moratorium on the planning for and development of the de-mapped paper streets called the Knoll. Dear Mayor, Mayor Rosito, dear trustees, we, the undersigned residents and voters of a beautiful village, ask you to take the necessary steps to implement an immediate moratorium on planning and development of the Knoll to ensure the current zoning is consistent with the village's comprehensive planning goals, particularly insofar as the former paper street in the area known as the Knoll is concerned. Given the village's express intent that paper street to be de-mapped and its specific policy goals of preserving and conserving this natural resource of the village, abutting the Jering Nature Preserve, development in this area would alter the character of the nature preserve and have a negative impact on its wildlife as well as the environment, given these woods stand to be replaced by impervious surfaces in an ecologically fragile area, when the village is already trying to mitigate serious flood issues. The village made its intent to protect this area from development crystal clear in a 2005 Board of Trustees resolution, which expressly de-mapped and discontinued the Knoll, together with 40 other paper streets. This decision was made due to the inherent difficulties associated with the development of paper streets in the village, including potential severe community impacts and quality of life concerns, planning issues in the village, and the fact that the paper streets in the village were drawn on official map for tax assessment purposes of real estate lots prior to the village's zoning and planning ordinances. The resolution further states, "The de-mapping and discontinuing of the aforementioned paper streets will, one, benefit the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the village; two, ensure that the remaining undeveloped land in the village is properly protected; and, three, maintain the unique aesthetic character of the village." This resolution was further confirmed and strengthened by the 2010 Vision Plan, which highlighted the importance of open spaces in many sections throughout the document. The section of the Vision Plan on the Knoll neighborhood states, "Take whatever steps are necessary to ensure that the formerly mapped paper streets remain off limits to development. Since the 2005 resolution and the 2010 village plan, it became even clearer that we need to protect areas like the Knoll from development. We have all experienced the devastating storms caused by climate change and proposed developments. Need to account for an increasing likelihood of a frequency of 100-year storm events." Someone will have to pick up my, if you don't mind, I was right here.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Christina Ha, and I live at 9D Briary Road. That's H-A, like the laugh. Okay, I will pick up, thank you, Andy. An article published by the American Society of Civil Engineers in December of 2023 states, "Climate Change Is Projected To Alter Rainfall Patterns In Many Parts Of The U.S. And Around The World," highlighting the importance of stormwater management systems within resiliency efforts. Stormwater systems typically are designed based on historical rainfall records with the assumption of climate stationarity. This assumption is no longer valid for many locations, leaving a gap in the knowledge about how to endure that these systems will meet the desired level of service over their design life. Currently, there's an application before the Planning Board to build a private road and four houses in this area. This raises immediate concerns because once the Knoll is raised to make room for four houses, it will be gone forever, setting a precedent for further development in the area, which is expressly at odds with the village's comprehensive zoning planning and the reason the Knoll was de-mapped by the village in the first place. Before any development moves forward in that area, whether for the currently proposed project or for any other part of the Knoll, we believe it is in the village's best interest to take all necessary steps to ensure that its resolutions and policy objectives are not rendered obsolete by development in an area that the village clearly intended to protect from development. We thank you for your stated support of the Vision Plan in an email to neighbors from November 2nd, 2023. We also appreciate that the village is already engaged in climate resiliency work and that the village has earned, earned the status of a climate-smart community by New York State. All of these factors, the village's policy goals, as well as the environmental sensitivities that must be determined before village policy is reversed in this area, must be carefully and responsibly weighed before any further development in this area takes place. On these bases, we ask you, our, our effect, our elected officials, we ask you, our elected officials, to now take the necessary steps by passing a moratorium temporarily ceasing any development in the Knoll. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you have a petition you wanted to give to us?
Hi, David Santini, 104 Briary Road, S-A-N-T-I-N-I. So there you have it. We've read the petition aloud for the record. Our petition asking for a moratorium on any planning of, of development of the Knoll. This petition is signed by hundreds of Dobbs Ferry residents, and I ask the trustees and the mayor to please read the comments left by the online petitioners, because they are thoughtful and they are important. And I also ask you to look at the addresses of all the people that signed the petition. Not, they're not just from the Knoll neighborhood. Sure, the people in the Knoll neighborhood are going to sign this petition because this development would destroy our neighborhood. But these petition signers are from across the village, from people that live on streets with names like Ashford, Broadway, Judson, Atilda, Landing Drive, Grandview, Bradley, Constance, and on and on and on. This is a village-wide issue. When we tell residents that the village would consider a development on the Knoll, they're shocked. Shocked because it flies in the face of the 2005 resolution to de-map all the paper streets in Dobbs Ferry, specifically so that they wouldn't be developed, specifically so that they would remain as open spaces. Shocked because it flies in the face of the Vision Plan adopted by the village in 2010, in which, in the section on the Knoll neighborhood, the plan implores the village to, quote, "Take whatever steps are necessary to ensure that the formerly mapped paper streets, streets remain off limits to development," end quote. I ask you, what steps have been taken so far to ensure this, considering this development is going in the opposite direction? Yeah, this is a village-wide issue, because if the village would allow development on the Knoll, this precious piece of property that it has adamantly said for years that they didn't want to develop, then no, no place in Dobbs Ferry is safe from development. And this is a very upsetting to the residents of Dobbs Ferry. So look, you got to tell us what kind of village you're going to be leading from here on. Do you want to de-map the paper streets? Do you not, not want to de-map the paper streets? Do you want to follow the Vision Plan? Do you not want to? We have a right to, to answers to these questions, and I dare say that if you agree to the moratorium, you'll have the time to look at these important issues and give the citizens of Dobbs Ferry some insightful answers. So I ask you, actually beg you, to please consider this moratorium. So much depends on it. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your selfless service. Now I'd like to introduce three young men from the Knoll neighborhood, who would like to present the petition to you. We have Abel Baird from Summit Terrace, we have Finn Vergas from Luzern, and we have Mason Roberto from Luzern. Gentlemen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we move on to the regular part of the meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anybody else who wants to speak? Anybody online? Okay, so we are going to the regular part of the meeting. If you guys want to stay, you can stay. If not, now's your time.
Thanks, everyone, for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Oh, okay. Come on up.
We have more courtesy than before?
Anybody online? No, we have one person.
No, Mr. Radomski wants to speak. Oh, okay.
Oh, okay. We'll get the police chief here.
Bob Radomski, Ogden Avenue. You hear me?
Can you move the mic towards, towards your face?
There you go. How's that?
Thank you.
Bob Radomski, Ogden Avenue. Now, you have that leaf blower law. I'm tired of picking up after these people. I'm only going to read the last section there. It says fines for violating the leaf blower law. Any person violating the leaf blower law shall be guilty of an offensive punishable by a fine of first offense $50, $250 for each subsequent offense. Now, the bottom set, sentence says, "For purposes of this section, a person includes the owner of the property and the operator of the leaf blower." We should be telling these people that own this property, that hire these people, "You will also get a fine." That will stop it. Now, I don't know if you people want to do this, but maybe on your next work session, we could figure out something to do with these contractors. I'm really tired of this. I, I do my own maintenance. Now, I'm closer to 80 years old than I am 70. I don't want to pick up after a contractor who's getting paid. I don't get paid for that. Please, let's see if we can get somebody involved in issuing these fines. First, I'd like to know, who, has anyone ever been fined? I know you can't give me the answers to this right now. Who's responsible for enforcing this law? When the police are called, most of the time, the contract is already gone. Can we have pictures taken if someone goes out and takes a picture? And can we find these people through that picture? Those are the questions I'd like answered. Maybe you can come up with it on your next work session. I'll leave it at that. One more thing. That tree on Danforth Avenue is ready to go. This is now a negligent claim, not only for the village, but for the property owner. You see this book here? I've been giving it to a person who possibly gets injured. I'm giving it to their attorney.
What tree on Danforth?
It's probably worth-
What tree?
What tree on Danforth?
Right on the corner of Danforth and Beacon Hill. Not Beacon Hill.
Ogden?
Ogden, yeah. There's two of them. You were issued, you told the cop, the property owner that they should be taken down, the village went and did it. This is going on six, eight months. Listen, we've already had a fatality. Irvington's had a fatality. We don't need one. And like I said, this book here, I'm going to hand to an attorney if there is a problem. It's probably worth millions. Please take care of that situation before we end up with a big lawsuit.
You know which tree he's talking about? Yeah? Okay. You do have a permit?
It's been going on for a long time, and I've been talking about this for a long time.
Okay, work with, work with the village-
Please take care of it before we end up with a major lawsuit.
Okay, work with Rob on that?
Excuse me?
I'm asking Steve to work with the village administrator.
Thank you. I appreciate it. The leaf blower law, maybe you could look into it on your next work session, please? Like I says, I'm pushing 80. I don't want to be cleaning after, after these guys anymore.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Radomski, there are, there are two issues that, that you brought up. There's the leaf blower law, which is about, which is about gas and electric, and then the, and then, I'm not talking about the, the tree. I think that's probably going to be handled. But then you're talking about picking up after people as a-
They blow the stuff, they, they don't clean. They just blow it from one neighbor to another, and then across the street.
Okay.
They fill up our drains.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
You're saying, you're saying the gas-powered ones are so powerful, they're just blowing it everywhere?
Well, yeah, they blow, they were using it today. And if you look at that, they're not supposed to.
No, I know.
They're blowing it into the street? Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely. They're blowing it into my yard.
She's writing notes. I'm just writing down notes.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I don't know how you're going to get, get to that.
Okay.
One more thing, I'm listening to this, these people that had the presentation on the 99 Main Street. You people have been looking to put underground electric for a long time in that area. It's going to cost. Maybe they should start putting up money for a feasibility study. You might want to charge them a little bit, put into, because there's going to be a lot of money. I know what it's worth.
Okay.
A feasibility study, maybe they can kick in a few dollars each one.
Okay.
Might be a good idea.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you. Anybody else online? Is anybody watching online?
She keeps texting us.
I think Liz and-
She's spelling.
Liz is, Liz is working remotely.
It's H-A. H-A.
She is.
Listen, it's okay. You can stop taking notes. I'm watching. Tell her to write down the names.
We're taking names.
Okay, let's move on. Action item number one is to consider a resolution to authorize the village administrator to execute contracts for information technology support services. So Rob, maybe you can go into this. I know we have a pretty long contract with details here from A1CS Business Technology Solutions we currently use. This is a renewal of that, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor.
And what are the, if you could give us the bottom-line costs?
Yeah, Mayor, basically, it's broken down like last year. The contract is up June 1st. Wayne Frick, the owner of the company, we're in constant contact. They've been taking care of our IT needs very successfully. This, you'll see, is broken down into three parts. The first one is for Village Hall. As far as Village Hall concerns, you'll see, the number went up a little higher than last year for a number of reasons, basically because we added one Honeywell server, because we needed something to actually be the brains of the operation for all the thermostats. And we also added the three desktop computers, so that added to the cost. We also asked them to give us a breakdown, which he did. This is called the Managed Services, which the village has been paying for anyway, so we're just budgeting it. So you'll see the number is higher. It was just never budgeted for. So this gives us a chance to actually, to include the hours. We broke it down on average number of hours over the last couple of years. It comes out to like one day a month, or eight hours a day, times their fee, which we're going to budget for anyway. So this is upfront now, instead of as needed. I can give you the numbers, or you want, I can just keep, talk about the other contracts?
Well, what was the number for that one?
The total fee, including the, the, the option for the managed services, it comes out to $4,276.67 per month. And that covers, again, all the workstations, the servers, his time to come. It includes additional projects that we asked him to do. That includes like AV services, Wi-Fi, cameras. Again, it's budgeting now, and it's, it's a position we don't have in the village, so we're going to have to have somebody like his company have representatives to, to come down. George Filipov has been with us a number of years, knows each and every computer, so he's, he's very handy, and to me, it's worthwhile.
Okay. And I think if, if I'm correct on, he's also submitted proposals for the fire department and for-
Police.
Police Department, right?
And the police department includes the, the service to the car, the car computers as well.
Okay.
That's correct.
And the first one is for site support for here, Stanley Avenue, 55 Main Street, and 60 Palisades, the park location. So it's, it's the village facilities in the first one. The second one is the police facilities, and the third one is fire.
Okay, are there any questions or comments regarding this?
Can you, so, there's a slight increase, Rob, like, from last year, and it's due to additional workstations, additional demand, it's-
Right, there's an additional server, and then there's three additional workstations, which he's now responsible to, to maintain. So that number came up, just his base fee came up just because of those three items, four items. And then we added an optional, which is the actual, the management responsibilities, which he's doing anyway. We're just showing it upfront, so we don't have to pay for it every time somebody shows up, hey, something broke. It's, it's covered.
So increased fee, increased service.
Yes, that's, that's, yes.
And it's broken out, and instead of a, instead of a case by case by case-
Yeah, I, yeah, it's a one, yeah.
It's a monthly, maybe.
Okay, so is there a motion to authorize the village administrator to execute the contracts as outlined in the proposal? Trustee Rosenberg, second trustee Taylor, all in favor? That passes unanimously.
And that's a total of three contracts?
Correct.
Right. And then, just so you know, the, the PD and FD didn't, didn't change, that actually, I think PD went down a little bit. So it's almost the same as last year now.
Action item number two is to consider a resolution to support the New York State Assembly and Senate bills, which are the Strong Packaging Reduction and Recycling Infrastructure Act. So for us, we have a, a memo, which come beyond plastics, which explains the amount of plastics that are being used, and also it gives us the local governments that have support this pending law. And by passing this law, we would be urging the legislature and the governor to sign into law, which is a Strong and Effective Packaging Reduction Act, which would, I think, require manufact, some, certain manufacturers to, to create a, to, to use less pollution, less chemicals in their manufacturing. So is there any discussion on this, or is there a motion to move this along? Trustee Asher, Rosen Asher, you want to, you, you are making the motion, and trustee Taylor, you're seconding it? All in favor? That passes unanimously. Action item number three is to consider a resolution, I'm not even going to say it this way, is there a resolution to waive enforcement of specific parking regulations or off-street parking at 99 Cedar Street on June 1st with a rain date of June 2nd in support of the Phoenisha Flea event? Trustee Rosen Asher, second, trustee Sullivan, all in favor? That passes unanimously.
Can I just say, what, why aren't we waving parking at the waterfront where the event is? There's no room? Or, like, what, what?
I thought we were waving at 99 Cedar.
I know we are, but why, is there a reason that it's not, that the parking isn't at the event? And that we would wave that parking?
There's a shuttle.
There's also sidewalks down, there's a shuttle-
There's going to be music and shut-
It's also the music tour, so-
So there's other things going on?
There's other things going on in town as well.
It's really an all downtown event.
We want to get people, there's also a sidewalk.
I got it, I missed that, sorry.
People to ex-
People to experience all we have to offer and get some steps.
I mean, Liz is watching.
Okay. We missed the motion and seconded.
I think it was...
I think Liz caught it on the line.
No, no, no. I have item number three. It's the first of... While I was talking, I was trying to write...
Just write down whatever.
Yeah. Maybe you just mix it up.
We can't. Liz will tell us. She gets my name wrong anyway, so...
It was Shari, and I think Larry.
Shari and Larry.
Do you want me to spell that?
And if it wasn't, it should have been.
S.H.
And Mo.
And Mo.
And Mo. Curly's out of town.
Action item...
It's official.
Action item number four...
I'm sorry.
We have a memo from the DPW explaining why they would like to consider a purchase of a Ford F-350 pickup DPW, which would replace a 2012 Ford. They sent us the pictures of that truck, which seems to be pretty bad shape. So is there a motion to authorize the Department of Public Works to...
May I just confirm, Jeff? This is in the budget and the capital plan, correct?
That's correct.
So is there a motion to...
Mo?
Larry? Mo?
Is there a motion to authorize the Department of Public Works to purchase a new 2024 Ford F-350 pickup truck with a plow? Trustee Taylor, second trustee Patino, all in favor? That passes unanimously.
You know?
Patino?
Patino and Taylor.
Curly.
It was very, very...
It's not late enough to be this giddy.
So Fast and Furious.
Action item number five. We also have, I think it's part of that memo, we have a new memo, which also from Stephen Trezor, which is asking us to consider purchasing a new dump truck to replace the current one, which is 1996, 28 years old. So this truck would replace that dump truck. So is there a motion to authorize the Department of Public Works to declare a 1996 dump truck as surplus and authorize the purchase of a new 2025 Kenworth T480 dump truck? Trustee Rosenberg?
Same questions. I apologize to ask. This all is part of the capital plan and is in the budget, correct?
It's part of the capital plan. I will come back later to ask to move budget around, but we're not going to ask to increase budget.
Okay. Trustee Rosenberg, second, trustee Taylor, all in favor? That passes unanimously. Action item number six. This is some day for you, Steve.
I was going to say, it's like all DPW here. Hold on.
Wow.
What else do you want? The pickup... The photo of the pickup truck was just photoshopped.
This wasn't our truck.
We have a memo dated May 20th from the DPW, the general foreman, who's asking us to consider purchasing two new Ford F-550 dump trucks to replace two 2012 Ford F-550 dump trucks. One's 12 years old, and it reaches end of life. So is there a motion? And let me before I even make the motion, Jeff, are these part of the capital plan and are in the budget?
Correct.
Okay. So is there a motion to authorize the Department of Public Works to declare two Ford F-50 dump trucks as surplus and to authorize the purchase of two new 2024 Ford F-550 dump trucks? Trustee Sullivan, second trustee Patino, all in favor? That passes unanimously. Action item number seven. Is there a motion to authorize the village administrator to enter into an agreement regarding the commercial insurance for general liability as outlined in the proposed proposal that he submitted during the workshop, which affords it to Travelers Insurance Company?
Travelers Property Casualty Company of America.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I think we're going to make that subject to...
Yeah, I think...
Subject to terms and conditions.
Yeah, I changed the resolution.
Make sure it...
Yes.
Make the...
What Matt just said.
Yeah, make the agreement subject to legal reasons. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Then I have to do a separate one for the workers' comp one, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to just say that, first of all, that resolution that has work men's comp is wrong. It's really a sexist way of doing it. It should be workers. And so is there a resolution to authorize the village administrator to enter into an agreement regarding the workers' compensation insurance? And I think we wanted it for three years. Are we going to investigate?
This is general commercial, one year. The workers' comp is the three-year. I don't think we finished it.
Number seven.
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe we actually made motions and voted on item seven. That's true.
That's...
You didn't. Right. We should do that before item eight.
Is there a motion, as I outlined for number seven? Trustee Rosenberg, second trustee Rosen Asher, all in favor? That passes unanimously.
And that's Travelers, right?
That's Travelers.
Yes. Thank you.
Action item number eight, as I've already outlined. Did we agree? I thought we agreed on the three-year. You're going to investigate the three years to make sure the coverage is the same, and then so you're going to go that way, right?
Right. It's another $20,000 savings on top of the first $25,000.
Okay. So is there a motion to authorize the village administrator to do as outlined? Trustee Patino, second trustee Taylor, all in favor?
That passes unanimously.
I'll show you the whole thing.
Action item number nine is to consider a resolution approving the audit of claims as submitted and recommended by the village treasurer. Jeff, is there anything that we should be aware of specifically?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the audit of claims? Trustee Rosenberg? You got that?
Yeah, I took that one. That thing that was wrong last year. That was covered.
Trustee Rosenberg is making the motion. Trustee Patino is seconding it.
I'm just looking at number eight. It says public officers and workers' comp. I just want to make sure that we have a contract for three years for both of those, or three years for the workers' comp?
To me, it's three years for the workers' comp. I think it was copied from last year wrongly, so it's for workers' comp.
It's not public officers' liability.
The public officers is part of the general liability.
Do you know? Okay. Thank you.
Did you get number nine?
Number nine?
We've got trustee Rosenberg motion, seconded by trustee Patino.
Yes.
How am I doing? How am I doing?
All in favor? That passes unanimously. Okay, we're done. I'm going to... I'd like to waive the reading of the...
Uh, yes.
Go ahead.
You need to talk about Phoenisha Flea.
Yeah. Trustee Galen asked me to do some announcements regarding it.
Trustee Galen will be texting us next.
So Phoenisha Flea is returning for year three at the Dobbs Ferry Waterfront Park. It's Saturday, June 1st, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Phoenisha Flea is a nomadic makers' fair that features creative, independent makers of ceramics, clothing, jewelry, gifts, and more from across the Hudson Valley, including some of our local Dobbs Ferry businesses. At the same time, the River Arts Music Tour will be going on all day throughout the River Towns. We're excited that this year, in addition to the main stage at Waterfront with music that will accompany the Phoenisha Flea, there will be two stages on Cedar Street to keep the party going. There will be a shuttle bringing folks from the waterfront all throughout the downtown, as well as free parking, which we just voted on, as well as free parking at the 99 Cedar Street Lot. For info on the music tour, visit riverarts.org or visit a downtown business to pick up the tour flyer. Downtown Dobbs Ferry businesses will also be having a sidewalk sale on Saturday during the same time. So come out to support the downtown businesses as part of a real all Dobbs Ferry event. There is also an evening concert at the Waterfront Park on Saturday night, also through River Arts. So that's a lot that people can take advantage of over the weekend here in Dobbs Ferry.
Trustee Sullivan, do you have anything? You have anything more, Matt? I'm sorry.
No, that's it.
Okay. Shari, you have anything?
Yeah, there's lots of big things. There's lots going on in Dobbs Ferry this weekend, and then Pride's coming on June
Trustee Patino?
I just want to note the passing of the first woman Democrat trustee in Dobbs Ferry, Joyce James.